All right, it's 6 o'clock, everyone. Electricity's in the air. I hereby call to order this May 7th meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board. Is there anyone here to speak to something that is not on tonight's agenda? No? Our first order of business is minutes, but before I get to that, I just want to make a brief statement. Our regular chair, Jesse Belcher-Tim, is not able to come. He may be able to arrive later in the meeting. We're not sure. Until then, I'll be acting chair, and should he arrive, I'll yield the floor gracefully, I hope, to him. Minutes are our next item. We had five of them: March 5th, March 12th, March 19th, April 2nd, April 16th, and none of them have been delivered to the board yet, so we're going to postpone that till our next meeting. Which brings our next item on the list to an A&R, which we'll do briefly, and then we'll get to the 6 o'clock public hearing. I'd like to get that out of the way, if that's okay with the ordinance subcommittee. So that A&R is from Thomas A. Cosiell for the creation of three new lots on the southwesterly side of Fort Hill Road. Now, is there someone here? Come on up and tell us what's going on.
What's happening? I'm Tom Cosiell from 172 East Street, and we had this plan before you, January 28th, and what happened is, on the plan, there was an undefined right-of-way that we didn't take care of since 1916. So I'm coming back tonight with a new plan, which defines a right-of-way from the Tri-County School property to Fort Hill Road.
Okay. Is that the plan that I'm looking at in front of me here?
Yes, yes, yes.
And this steel building number 30, is that the existing Fort Hill?
Brewery.
Brewery?
Right.
And what are we doing here? We're creating three new lots, lots 2, 3, and 4?
Correct.
Lot 2 with, what am I looking at, 260 feet of frontage?
Yeah.
Is that right? Am I reading that correctly? Lot 3 has a combined amount that's vastly exceeding that. It's a big lot, lots of frontage, 140, 107, 35, and 180. And Lot 4 has 129 feet of frontage, and the manhandle and rail trail is abutting it with a 10-foot spacer.
Right. To me, that, to me, those numbers, the frontage on the lots are 140 feet for industrial lots, so the numbers that you said confuse me myself. I think you have to add a couple together, but the lots are conforming.
So it's 140, well, yeah, this one says, okay, so 140 for industrial, 100 for the residential that we used to, so that's a good correction. Can you confirm that? Jeff, 140 is the number we want? At this last Lot 4, it looks like what you're doing is your, this 10 feet, is that the easement you're referring to?
Yes.
And you're including that as part of your frontage?
Correct.
So your 129 plus 10 gets you to, plus 10 to 6, gets you to 140 even?
Right.
129, 74, got it.
So that's what I did coming before you, and we wrote that on that, above that paragraph there, that it's a defined right-of-way, and we cleaned it up, so to speak.
Okay.
Because the buyer, the proposed buyer for Lot 2 would not move forward until that was cleared up.
Okay. I don't see any issues. It meets the frontage requirement. I'm a little, it's a little weird to include the easement as part of that. Is that in any way trip any flags for you? Is that just normal process?
It's actually the opposite, whereas the easement was previously undefined.
I see.
And so, in the potential conveyance of the property title search, found that there was this undefined easement area, and so I do, I applaud the property owner for actually going back to the surveyor, and they established where the easement will be, and so that'll get recorded with the registry of deeds, and then this clears up that question that arose.
Well said, and that certainly illuminates what happens. Well done. This looks like it's a simple A&R. Does anyone have any concerns? It would be a motion to endorse. Anyone want to take it?
I'll make a motion to endorse the plan as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. So I have any signatures?
You.
All right, then, while that's underway, and I'm signing, the next order of business I have, and we'll get these through, do you have any questions? Yeah, you can tell me about. We, our next order of business is the cannabis equity zoning modification and public hearing. We'll move into that, and you guys can take this time to open your hearing while I sign off the document.
Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Ordinance Subcommittee is in.
Do you want to lead it for a little bit there? While I sign?
I'll wait, we can wait.
All right. You can hear the one you have in front of you.
Yeah.
And sign underneath it?
Right.
Do I get the mile back now?
Yeah.
That does not exist. There you go. Jeff, how many do you need? All right, I'm sorry about the delay. My apologies, folks. No hand cramps. All right, we had a lively discussion when you presented this to us, two weeks ago, I think it was. We had a lot of questions, but overall, it seemed like a great thing. Do you want to kind of give another rundown of what we're talking about, or do you want to highlight on some specific items that we talked about last time?
So I think what we're going to do with the cannabis equity ordinance, Counselor Zare brought it forward, so I'm going to let him speak to, you know, any sort of things that he'd like to highlight.
Counselor Zare?
Thank you, Chairman, Chairperson Derby, sorry. As you probably remember, those at least who were gathered here, I think, were there some members of the planning board that were missing last time? We did have a very lively and very pun-filled discussion last time. We'll try to limit, we'll try to make it equally lively, but we'll go moderate on the puns, I think, tonight.
So that was funny?
Yeah, indeed, yes, as we try to roll out this new amendment I'm proposing. For those in attendance who weren't here last time, the proposal that we're discussing tonight is an amendment that's been put forward by the ordinance Subcommittee to create essentially special permits for what we're going to call equity applicants within the city for cannabis retail. I felt, and I believe it's fair to say, since the ordinance Subcommittee moved this forward, that what we're seeing in the landscape today for legalized cannabis in Massachusetts and certainly across the country is that there are individuals who are being marginalized in the process, and we're seeing large corporations taking advantage of what's mostly a cash business in terms of investment, and we're seeing people who, for a variety of reasons, have been either through the, what was once the illegal cannabis market, are being not, are being restricted from access to this now legal industry. The state has set up some definitions, we talk in here a little bit, within the amendment about economic empowerment applicants and the social equity program, and we can certainly go into some detail about that if needed, although I'm just trying to create a broad outline. I felt, and we felt, as the ordinance Subcommittee, and my fellow members can correct me if I'm wrong, that on the state level, these definitions are useful in terms of creating, in terms of decreasing barriers and opening more doors to applicants to own these businesses, but also on the local level, there's opportunities to broaden the definition. And so, we recommended creating a category, just generally known as East Hampton Equity Applicants, which would include economic empowerment applicants on the state level and social equity program participants on the state level, as well as then also including applicants for special permits for cannabis retail in the city, which would include minority business and women business enterprises. I think there was discussion last time about veteran business enterprises, I reflect on that, I think that's certainly something worthy of discussion. And then, more importantly, in light of some of the discussions we've had about what these, what the industry's looking like in regards to the corporate presence, both from in-state and certainly out-of-state investors, is that we want to open up opportunities to make the local cannabis industry one that's accessible to East Hampton residents. And so, in some ways, number five is one to at least highlight, I wouldn't say it's the most important, but recommending that we create space for individuals, residents who have resided here at least five years, to have access again to this equity pathway that we're recommending. And essentially, what this would do would be to, again, to create kind of a separate category to allow the individual, the individual categories I just outlined, to be able to come forward and be unrestricted and not have competition from some of these bigger and potentially more entitled applicants that are able to easily overcompete, mostly because of their financial resources, but certainly potentially also just because of access to the system, so to speak. The proposal suggests expanding our current six special permits to eight, and within that expansion, carving out at least one of those six to add into the equity applicant pool to create currently, under the current proposal, a total of five non-equity and a total of three equity applicants. So I think that's mostly, in a nutshell, is...
I think so. Do you want to?
Yeah, well, I just have a question, because I know that sooner or later, those six will come on board, either by, I would think, probably by the middle of next year, we should have all six on board, do you think?
Last meeting, Jeff detailed for us that we have three active, two sort of in the wings that have gone far but aren't really fully done with their process, and we didn't really have a six yet that's come to any recognizable readiness level. Is that correct?
Yeah, yep. So we have one adult-use retail dispensary operating, so that's into, so it's secured all its local approvals, all the state approvals, and that's operating. Herbology Group, which is at 195 North Hampton Street, has secured the local special permit, the provisional license from the Cannabis Commission, and, you know, is nearing completion of that process to renovate the property, although they have not activated on a building permit or anything like that. And then we have our downtown shop, The Verb is Herb, which has received an adult-use special permit, provisional license from the Cannabis Commission, and as far as we know, is proceeding towards the final licensure. And then what we have is, we have Holistic Industries at 155 North Hampton Street, which has a medical marijuana special permit and the Department of Public Health approval, and is building out the dispensary for medical use. And so what we know is that they recently notified us of a new community outreach meeting, which is one of the final steps before they apply for the Cannabis Commission. And then our local process is that the applicant would have to have a completed application with the commission before they can apply locally, so we expect them to be moving forward towards this board again for adult use. And then the fifth is the property on Industrial Parkway, which again, has a medical marijuana special permit for dispensary cultivation, but as far as we understand, their first community outreach meeting has expired, so they're valid for six months, so their status is not clear in terms of whether they're intending to fully move forward. So we have three that are, have achieved actual adult-use special permit at this point.
And the one on Women's Go Way is no longer to our knowledge?
Well, it's hard to say, and I guess I would just add one more thing, which is all five of those entities have executed host community agreements with the city, so...
The one expired.
That's the, yeah, so the host community agreements don't expire, but the community outreach meeting does expire in six months if it's not moved.
So the answer then to your question is, I mean, we don't know if, when a six one's coming, and we don't have one in the wings right now.
I realize that, but my thing is, why would we want to put this on our board now to increase to eight when we don't even have all six on board, and we're not sure, if there are going to be, like you said, there's five, and there might be one that'll just not exceed its expectations, so do we really need to increase to eight until we see just how the six are doing, or is it going to be eight now and 10 later? I mean, I know we have a lot of package stores, which was brought up to me, but I'd like to see these, any of these, and these operations succeed at what they're doing and give them a chance and then show that they can succeed, so that if we do increase, we can show the people and show the people who want to do this type of business that it does succeed, and they can go forward with it.
Your question is valid, and it's one we discussed at some length, although we didn't have the opportunity of an open hearing so that we could do some back and forth. But I remember, I might chair the whole thing, I don't, I can pick these guys, he has to pick you. But I just want to throw out some of the things we touched on before we respond, but we definitely, you're moving one of them over, so that it'd be three equity and fives. And we talked about a potential, I think you used the word pause, I used slowdown, because you, it was discussed that at the state level, there were only two of these applications that ever even got through. It's a narrow chance, unless it's built well, that we'll find a lot of these. We hope we do. That's mission successful on ordinance like this. But definitely filling these, it's going to be a big slowdown. There's going to be a lot fewer of these equities for the next three licenses. So from my perspective, and I'm sure you have your own, adding two isn't so much as a big deal if all three aren't going to be used, so.
So my comment is that the fact that we don't have a sixth means that now is the perfect time, because if we filled that six, now we have fewer opportunities to give equity individuals an opportunity to join in the marketplace. And the way things are today, as Jeff just outlined, we have a vacancy in the licensing. We would move that license over to equity. I think it could potentially cap us at five for a long time, which has to make a certain population happy, that we would actually be kind of capped at five until an equity applicant comes into play, and then, and only then, would those next licenses be available for, to be given out. So I think now is the perfect time, actually.
Go for it. Counselor Zare?
And I would also add to that, that this initiative is the textbook definition of what being proactive means and being responsible. You don't plan when you're in the moment, you plan ahead of time. And so, by being thoughtful and being forward-looking, we look to what the industry will look like. We give the, we give these populations opportunities to keep the doors open for them now, as opposed to waiting till all these licenses are gobbled up, and then sit around and say, oh, well, what are we going to do now for the people who have been shut out of the process? So we start now in 2019, and we raise a flag in East Hampton saying, we're here and we're open to you, and we're especially, some of these East Hampton residents, some of which, you know, the requirement that we outlined here is that they be residents for five years. Some people may be residents for three years now and be interested in owning a cannabis retail location, and they're going to have to wait a couple of years. They also may have to wait a couple of years just to raise funds and resources. So it lays the path to allow this alternative pathway and people to start down that road now, as opposed to kind of having to catch up with this in the future, when, again, we have, we'd have to talk about it all over again, figure this out. I also agree with the notion, the terms we use, pause or slow down, it allows us to catch up with wherever the industry is going in the state. I think there's been some discussion about what's happening with delivery, there's still, there's still discussions around social consumption. This gives us a time, an opportunity to cut, to, for more of a slow burn, so to speak, and to allow us to move with the speed of the industry, as opposed to kind of grabbing all these licenses now, and then when potentially more things open up on the state level in a few years, we say, oh gee, we only had six special permits, they're all claimed, and now this other thing, we're going to have to figure out how to legislate around. So I think it allows us to move more with the process than overtaking the process.
So you're suggesting plan ahead and not slow, and not pause, just plan it ahead?
Indeed.
Have those, those other two to make it eight, like in the basket, ready to be used, so that if someone comes by, they'll be able to do it?
Correct, sir, because I think that as we've seen historically so far, there's been, there have, for a variety of reasons, been very few opportunities or very few potential owners that have come forward across the Commonwealth for these, that have graduated or have met the criteria for these kind of equity programs. And so, it gives us an opportunity to kind of put a beacon out across the state to say, we, this is what we stand for, we're open to these types of applicants, and it's going to probably take you a few years to raise funds, to get organized, but we're waiting here for you when you're ready.
If it were me, I'm, all right, hold on one second, I'll let him finish, you'll be next.
The thing that I was trying to, after reading things, well, reading the last minutes, I went through them thoroughly, I sort of got boggled by some of the things, but everybody's jumping for joy in some ways that we went from zero equity in our town, so now we just, because of cannabis, we just got ourselves a $58,000 or $68,000 land, you know, a windfall. So is it, we're looking for, I know we want to give people a chance to go into business, because this is a business, it's not, not what people like to think it is, but it is a business, but it's also a tax revenue for the town. And I, from what I understand, and I know I only have a few calls, and I discussed it with a few other people, and Jeff, nothing has been down, put down in, and said, this is what this tax money's going to be used for. I know the mayor would like to see, and I'm happy that she said that she would like to keep the police force up, because we did have some problems back then.
It's a valid point, but it's outside the scope of the equity.
I know, but what you're trying, what we're trying to do is give, initially going from six to eight, which sounds like a good viable program to do.
To make more money, I see what you're saying.
And some people think it's just an idea to make more money for the town, and that criteria and that is going to plague some of us. Oh, you only want this because you're going to get a lot of tax money, you know? It's, you have to realize that there are people out there that are going to wonder what they're, if we're going to get tax money out of this, how many, how will it affect my tax rate? That's what's going to happen.
Okay. Agree?
When you look at all the ones we have so far in town, doesn't Brother Herb already qualify as being a smaller applicant? Wouldn't that be qualifying as, more or less, as one of we have already in the city?
You mean an equity applicant?
Yeah.
Not technically.
That wouldn't be? They're not a big business, who's behind them?
Well, that's just, and we haven't really defined the criteria, I mean, the state, the CCC has its criteria, and they're not one of the two applicants. We're building this criteria.
Yeah, if you look at, and I can blow it up, but if you look at the list, if you start with East Hampton resident, you know, they're not that, and then minority-owned, women-owned, or...
And that's in the proposed list.
They don't qualify for any of those.
Yeah, they don't meet the actual qualifications.
They don't qualify at all?
No.
I thought the guy was a pop and shopper, or...
He might be, but he's not.
The way he came about it.
And I think that's a great, I'm sorry, I think that's a great segue, though, because really, in trying to define the right number, if it were me, in your group, putting this together, that, we sort of led with that number of, you know, adding two more. Really, it's about, for me, these five, and really talking about them, which I think we should get into, is what are the regulations that we're putting forward, because that really is going to determine what the comfort level and how those numbers should fit. And I get the sense from this, after reading it, we'll talk about it, that they're, they're good numbers, we can debate it, but I think we really ought to hammer why they're valid by going through what these five points are, what we're actually doing, if you're amenable to that. I think Counselor Coniff has a question.
Well, I just wanted to make a comment that I think it's really dangerous for us to think about each of these businesses as suddenly going to bring in 60 grand each as a windfall to taxes. There is a finite marketplace, and whether we put two people in there or 100 people in there, there's only so much that's going to be sold. And the more players, the less money that each player potentially has in sales. So I don't think this is really, this is a nice tax revenue stream that we have not had before, but it's not going to make anybody, we're not going to get $750,000 like North Hampton, so get that off your minds, but it's not, it's not really something that we should look at from a tax perspective. That certainly is not how I'm looking at it. I'm looking at it as opportunities in the marketplace for people and creating equity for those people who cannot move as quickly. I mean, the individual who's got the Verb, I don't know the name of it, the Verb Shop, I mean, he had backing. He had, although small, he had the ability and the financing to move forward, so it's not the size of the operation, it is the financial backing and the ease at which they can move into the marketplace, which not everyone has the resources to do, and it takes them a little longer, and that's what we're talking about. We're talking about creating a level playing field with people who do not have the resources that these other folks do.
Then how can you operate a business without any cash? I mean, I like to start on, I want to build business, any business. If you don't have the mind to get into business, you don't get into business. It's as simple as that.
I agree. I mean, I think if we said that we can't open any more coffee shops until we have people that want to open a coffee shop that have no money, it seems weird to me.
Makes no sense.
I don't understand that logic.
I think that's valid, but in nowhere in here have we called out a lack of funds as a criteria. I think they're sort of won by association, I'm guessing, you know, and I'm not saying it's illegitimate, I think the reason that we're only two is because it's a very narrow needle to thread. And this is why I believe it will be a slowdown, I don't think that's necessarily wrong. You had stated, please correct me if I'm saying this wrong, at the last meeting, that you weren't quite comfortable with that sixth?
Yeah, I'm not. I think, I totally agree, I think it's a great idea to have this program. I think it's, it would be good to be able to reserve three spots for people that are trying to open up a small business and that need that help, need that time. I don't understand why it's, why we're, why eight is the magic number. Why can't it be nine? And we already have three approved businesses, we have three licenses left, let's have the three licenses remain and add three more, and that's equity, to me. So, and so, because we're starting in 2019 with this concept and this idea, let's start from here, and let's think about three and, you know, bring it up to nine, let's keep our three, and that's, that seems to make sense to me.
Counselor Zare?
I have no complaints about that at all, and it's also a square number, so I'm also happy.
Yeah, exactly.
But, yeah, no, I don't, I don't have any issues with that. I think in deference to the potential for public concern over the, obsessing about numbers?
Yeah.
And what that might represent?
Yeah.
I thought that eight was a nice kind of compromise within some of the sentiments that were within the community that we heard during some of our other joint public hearings, but I don't disagree with that at all.
I do recommend that we take that discussion of number, though, and put it at the tail end of our thing, because really, what's going to fuel comfort level in any of these numbers and help us inform that, is what are restrictive criteria, what do we have to meet? And if we can get that out of the way first, so that we all fully understand it, I think that'll really help us deal with the number. You with me? You've got five items here. The first one... The first one is, and, I can't read this, an economic empowerment applicant certified by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission, or separately certified by the East Hampton Planning Board to meet the criteria specified in 93R, excuse me, 935 CMR 500 dot 101, parentheses, one, parentheses, E, two, comma, A dash F. Right, great. But that's where the CCC specifies what, what an economic empowerment applicant is. And at the last meeting, we spent a great amount of time talking about how one through four, that, plus number two, social equity program participants, number three, minority business enterprises, and number four, women business enterprises, that all of those come with a certification that comes from the CCC or the, I'm trying to remember the name of it.
It's actually just number three and four, so number two is separate from the other minority and women, if I'm not mistaken.
Supplier diversity program.
Right, so that, but, and I think we talked last time about that being, leaving out veterans, LGBT-owned businesses, there's also, I actually went on there to look at them, there's a Portuguese-owned business.
I saw that, yes.
So I think it'd be a good idea to kind of make it more generic, instead of specifying minority and women, you could actually just call them disadvantaged-owned businesses, and then under that, under that description, which is the general overarching term.
I agree.
You could put in all the different categories, as, and then as on Mass.gov, or, you know, as defined by the state of Massachusetts.
The supplier diversity program.
Yeah, supplier diversity program.
I completely agree with that. How do you guys feel about that?
So I was reading, I was reading more about that recently, actually have it pulled up, and I don't, I'm not, I, I'm not necessarily opposed to that, I think that there's, I would almost argue that some of the groups, I think within the supplier diversity program, one could claim are more disadvantaged than others, but I don't necessarily want to get into a debate about that. But I don't, then there's also groups here that I certainly have historically supported, such as the LGBTQ population, so I think that, I don't have an issue with that, what is my follow?
I don't, I don't see an issue with it.
It just makes it more, so if they add in programs later, you know, add in other businesses, it's just stays generic, or takes them out.
I'll read what I'm talking, what we're talking about here, to be specific.
Our planner had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
If you, I would like you to read that, too. I think that, for the purposes of clarity, and if you are an applicant trying to, to move forward through the process, I think attaching it to the supplier diversity office definitions will be helpful all around, so, you know, I'm usually the, the person who interacts with these people pretty early on, and if they can either say that they're moving forward with that process of certification, or have that certification, that'll be a huge, that'll be a huge benefit in moving the process forward. And when it comes to the planning board, just like we've, we've looked for applicants to come with the Cannabis Control Commission provisional license, and if you come with that, then it basically eliminates about 10 questions in 20 minutes of time during a public hearing, if we can attach it to sort of a known certification system.
I'll read this, but I think you're absolutely right, and we talked at the last meeting, just so we can kind of get it out on the record again, that, you know, one of the big issues, and Jesse raised this, is that how do we vet that people have this, so, or that people qualify as a, as a woman business enterprise or minority business enterprise? And having this certification, just as what you said, and I'm basically repeating it, is beneficial for us in vetting this process.
And I think if we're clear, as long as we're on the same page, that it would be an application requirement.
Yep.
So it would be something that, you know, in my office, someone comes in, I, I of course can talk to them for a while if they're in, get, going through the process, but, you know, we would want to achieve that certification to make sure that they're, then they're ready to come forward.
That helps us a lot.
Yes, it does.
All right, so overview from Mass.gov on learn about the supplier diversity program. The supplier diversity program, SDP, was established to promote supplier diversity in public contracting. The program encourages the award of state contracts in a way that strengthens and increases business opportunities for minority business enterprises, MBEs, women business enterprises, WBEs, and service-disabled veteran business enterprises, SDVOBEs. In 2015, the SDP was expanded to include veteran business enterprises, VBEs, lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender business enterprises, LGBTBEs, and disability-owned business enterprises, DOBEs. And I didn't see the one you mentioned on that list.
It's, I think it's an overarching, it's called disadvantaged business enterprises?
DOBE?
DB, that's disabled, I think. So generally, they, they have them as, it's like disadvantaged is the general term, I don't see it on this particular page, but...
There's two different pages that mention two different enterprise, two different groups of enterprises, interestingly, but, yeah.
If we were super cool...
We can craft up language to say, you know...
Oh, I apologize.
No, just to say that, you know, that this supplier diversity, they must comply with the supplier diversity program as defined by Mass.gov, and that, and then as the definition, it could be all those different, you know, examples of categories, or something like that.
If we were super cool, we would have invited a rep to come and speak to us from this organization, which considered if we continue the public hearing. Okay, so attaching language to this that kind of eliminates the calling out of minority business enterprise, women business enterprises, these two that are specifically part of the SDP, and rather attaching it to the SDP and letting them manage what that is?
Mm-hmm.
Are we all agreed on that? Is there anyone that disagrees with that?
No.
Now do we need language for that?
Yeah, there should be some kind of language.
Any business enterprise defined within the SDP program?
Mm-hmm.
Or supplier diversity program, SDP?
Just...
And that would replace three and four.
Yeah.
To replace three and four.
And it'll make it a little simpler to understand.
So that leaves one and two, economic empowerment, that's CCC, and then social equity program. How does the social equity program differ from the economic empowerment applicant?
If you look at the definitions, it's on there, under B, under the new, so, social equity program applicants meet, means the program sponsored by the CCC to train or assist applicants meeting one of the more following criteria. They reside in an area of disproportionate impact for at least five of the past 10 years, they have a past drug conviction, have they been, and they have been residents in Massachusetts for the last three preceding 12 months, and they have been married to or the child of a person with drug conviction, and they have been residents in Massachusetts for at least the preceding 12 months.
So that's the social equity program, but that's not, you asked about the economic empowerment, right?
Well, I mean, that's one of them, I also want the other one, the economic empowerment, let me see, it's right, that's above it.
That's number one.
Number one, I can pull that up if you want me to.
In the packet, I did excerpt out two guidance documents from the Cannabis Control Commission, so it's, it's deeper in the packet, but there's a guidance for equity provisions, I don't know if I'm understanding, it's the second CCC document, which aligns actually pretty clear terms.
Okay.
Economic empowerment.
And I apologize, we're, some of this information we just got, so we're going to need to digest it a little bit. But I just want to grab that, I want to know specifically what an economic empowerment applicant is. I mean, obviously, we're deferring it to the CCC, and it's, it's wise to leave it to them to define it, but we should have a sense of what it is. Which page here? It's past the 1010, our own zone, and clearly.
Guidance equity provisions.
Yeah, right.
It's a, it's a one pager on guidance for equity provisions.
Thank you, I'll be able to look at that. About how far in the packet?
Probably about half, no, two-thirds of the way through.
Two-thirds, I haven't got to it.
Actually, sorry, no, more like...
Got it, almost, yeah.
Yep, that's it.
Majority ownership belongs to people who've lived in areas of disproportionate impact for five of the last 10 years, majority ownership was held one or more previous positions where the primary population served, were disproportionately impacted, or primary responsibilities included economic education, resource provision or empowerment, or to disproportionately impacted individuals or communities. At least 51% of current employees slash subcontractors reside in areas of disproportionate impact, and will increase to 75% by first day of business. At least 51% of employers or subcontractors have drug-related corey but are otherwise legally employable in a cannabis-related enterprise. A majority of the ownership is made up of individuals from Black, African, American, Hispanic, or Latino descent. Owners can demonstrate significant past experience in or business practices that promote economic empowerment in areas of disproportionate impact, and assistance with identifying or raising... Oh, no, I'm sorry, that's the end, I'm on a different page. So that's the definition of it. Okay, so they are different, they're different programs. And that leaves number five, which we all talked about in the last meeting, was kind of a big one for everyone here, which is the owned by East Hampton, where the, you have to have a majority of at least 51% of ownership of an East Hampton residence who resided in East Hampton for a continuous donation of five years. Your definition here of an East Hampton equity applicant says you have to meet at least one of these things. So it could be any one of them, as it stands, right? And I think stating that is really important into how this is defined. I had mentioned at the last meeting that maybe number five should be an and, that it, but the problem with that is that really narrows who can, I mean, that, that makes it so that you could add 20 licenses and you're still not going to get anyone opening up an organization here, it won't matter how many you add. So I, I say this to kind of define to people that are afraid about the number, that the way this is built will really impact, you know, how you should worry about how that number of extra licenses is really going to affect the community. So 51%, we had a discussion at the last meeting, Jesse brought it up, of how do we prove that someone's got, how do you prove the owner of the business has, has that?
Look on city records, see if they have their owner.
Probably city records, utility bills, I mean, there's multiple methods, if you look, for instance, I forget what I was looking up, the new, I think it might have been apropos of the new, the new, that new true ID, I know this is totally kind of digressing, but there's, there's various, there's various types of programs and applications that require you to demonstrate residency in, in multiple ways, and so it's, like, like Mr. Cockshaw was saying, I mean, there's city records, there's utility bills, there's...
Which of those things would you accept?
Well, I think all of them, and I think, I think identifying residency is, was not, if I remember that the, the chair was raising a question of more about how do we prove ownership, so that was more of the, sort of the, the landscape that is not really clear at the local level, and it's seemingly maybe not that clear at the state level about, you know, you may get presented ownership at the time of an application or a public hearing, but then changes in ownership happen all the time, and there's not, I mean, historically, even with special permits for, for any use, ownership, you're tying into ownership has always been a little challenging to follow that through the years, and so that, I believe that that's where Jesse had raised the real question of figuring that out, sort of at point A, and then understanding, you know, point B or C later down the road, did the ownership change? And so I think that that was more his point, because I think you can prove residency pretty easy, there's city clerk records are easy, so that's not really the issue, just ownership in general.
Yeah, and that says that you have to, owned by an East Hampton resident, of 51%. So you're right, I mean, that's the whole equation.
In a fair ways, there are, you know, I worked a long time in Ameris, and they basically had conditions like you wouldn't believe, that you could set it up differently, differently than the special permits that have been granted so far, it would be that ownership is a, like an integral factor of the special permit, so, you know, you would have to get a little bit more information on the ownership structure at the beginning, and, you know, there would have to be a condition that ownership matters, like, as of right now, those other special permits are not contingent upon who owns it, it's more the use. And so it can be done, but I think it's just going to require a little bit of thought.
So would we have to include in this requiring an ownership document? Which somehow we spell, spell out what's in an ownership document?
Right.
Where they have to provide this, that, that, and the other thing that spells out ownership?
And then ownership, and changes in ownership of the corporation or business would, would be subject to coming back to the planning board.
Is that something that if we all agreed and wanted to go forward with, that you'd be able to come up with some sort of draft, or would you want us to discuss? Okay.
Yeah, I think there's a way to craft the language, it's just going to be an enforcement question, you know.
And I would, I would also add to that, that the ownership is a continuous component, so they couldn't, they couldn't prove ownership in the beginning, and then, you know, as soon as they get the permit, sell it.
I think all would be, so maybe if they decide not to pay for that certification to be a minority business, and now that was their criteria, and then other, they'd have to keep up their criteria for being eligible.
I would actually imagine that, if you look at the ABCC, which is the state licensing for alcohol, I think that they have, I think that they, that would be potentially the model to follow ownership, so there's percentage of ownership, and...
Right.
If I can channel myself, you know, back in the day, that those licenses are contingent upon the, the percentage of ownership of each person involved, and so if I just try to mirror something like that, I think it's doable.
I may be the only person in the room who's not grasping why an East Hampton resident
should be equated with some of these other social equity individuals. We could have someone in East Hampton who has a million dollars and is coming in, they meet the criteria, they get to go into one of those three equity ones, when I think they should probably go to, you know, one of the other ones. So I'm not real clear on why you can just, just be a resident, and I also find the way we're wording it to be a lot more onerous than just getting an application, you know, you have to go through a couple of different hurdles for, for ownership and business people, the majority, 51% of residency and all of that, that seems to be, I'm not sure how that qualifies as equity, and maybe I'm the only one in the room.
I think it's a great question, it's one on any one of these, we should be asking these same kind of questions. I can only answer for myself, and I'll throw in, and anyone else, feel free if you, if you're willing, but for me, it's, it's clearly about a local-first mentality, and, and believing that when, when you bring up local, and when you support local, that those dollars come in philanthropically, and that the community gets paid back, we've already put a lot of license capability in the hands of potentially big box, you know, other entities that are coming in, and, and I think it's always wise to support the local community as part of your efforts. I mean, that's, that's why for me, number five isn't just, I mean, it's a good ask question, it doesn't just belong here, but in my mind, should be promoted above the others, so just...
So is it, so is it, they have to meet, they have to meet the residency and one of the other four?
Well, I'd suggested that, but personally, I, I think that that, it's just too restrictive, you know, I don't, I don't think it could happen, but I, I wanted to just lend credence to why I think that has value, and it might not be legitimate, but that's just what I think.
And does it make sense maybe to open this up and maybe hear some...
Yeah.
...comment from the public?
You want to just stick to this issue specifically?
I mean, I, I think that it would be interesting to hear just what people think so far.
I think we skipped over public speak, so it might be a good idea, yeah.
I mean, and then we can, we can always come back to where we are.
Okay, sounds good, sounds good. Is there any, oh, I think we've got one already. Anyone that wants to speak, line up, come on up.
Good evening, Nicole Chappell, Mayor. I would like to, one, applaud both ordinance and planning for taking up this issue, and I know there's been a lot of thought and community conversation, so to see something so progressive come to formal boards and in front of city council subcommittee makes me indeed very proud. Thank you. And follows up on the great work that these both boards did to actually bring an exceptional ordinance around cannabis to our city years ago. I would just comment on what's before us tonight around the different, the five categories, on number five, and the continuous duration of at least five years, I'd like to see that qualification also be added to one through four. I think that the consolidation of the industry, if that is indeed the intent of this ordinance, should also have that caveat. That said, I do have concerns around administrative burden, and would like to see other state, if not federal, guidance to how, to be applied to our local, our local ordinance and test for this, one, because they have the roadmap, but two, if in the future cannabis and this industry were to be accepted on the federal level, we would have applicants in these categories that would instantly be able to take advantage of SBA funds, or, or different trainings around minority women and those, those applicants, and would just ask for consideration around, around that. I would also just mention that as far as the stream of revenue, I think that there is a strong argument to diversify in any industry and, and have a level playing field as much as possible, and we have yet again, something very unique and new in cannabis. I think back to if this could have been done, and there could have been some discussion around these topics when we looked at gambling and casinos, I, I think we would have a very different thought and approach, and less concerns around sustainability and that industry with local economy. My last point would be that East Hampton, we have done a lot of work, and certainly in my administration, around sustainable economic development, the downtown strategic planning process that, that started today, really looks at what can happen for East Hampton in East Hampton, that is uniquely East Hampton, based on our past, where we are now, future, taking in a larger economy, and what we have seen in our maker entrepreneurial and even manufacturing sector, sectors, that infecent incentives, and also that playing field that is uniquely... that infecent incentives and also that playing field that is uniquely East Hampton really encourages those three sectors, market sectors, to stay in East Hampton. And I see cannabis going the, the same way. And, and would, you know, again, wonder around gaming if, if that conversation happened. I thank you for the opportunity to comment. I would also like to welcome to East Hampton Cannabis Control Commission Commissioner Tidal. To East Hampton, thanks for making the trip, and thank you for members of this committee to extend the invitation. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Shaleen. I'm a member of the Cannabis Control Commission. And I wasn't actually planning to say anything, but I did want to make a quick comment about the equity program and also about ownership. But first, I just want to thank you so much. It means so much to see you having this thoughtful conversation, and it's exactly what we need at the state level because of host community agreements. What we get is a function of what goes through the local process. And so this is exactly what needs to happen to give Massachusetts voters the vibrant, diverse industry that they wanted. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And I apologize, I don't know what's going on. I thought I turned it off, but I guess I didn't.
So two quick comments. One is, something that's been raised to me earlier is that there was a concern about not having enough econ empowerment and equity applicants. And so I just wanted to let you know that the equity program is launching. So our vendor deadline passed last week. The first equity program participants have been notified that they qualify, and so they'll be receiving training, and if all goes well, you will have qualified, trained entrepreneurs approaching you. And then on the subject of ownership, this has just come up recently among many local officials who are interested in this, and I'm very glad. One thing that I would suggest, and this is just personal, this isn't coming from the commission, but just an idea, is we require disclosure of any management agreement that sends revenue or profits back to another entity. So you may want to require that disclosure, and also perhaps some kind of consequence that if such agreements aren't disclosed, that maybe the host community agreement isn't, isn't valid. So something to think about that wouldn't require more inspection on your part. And then lastly, I just wanted to thank you, Jeffrey, because you gave very good feedback when I asked what could be done to make the industry more equitable, and you suggested moving the application around so that we did more pre-certification at the state level, and we're now looking into that formally, so thank you.
Thank you. Jeff. Thank you very much, and we appreciate your coming all the way out here.
And this isn't responding, but I just really wanted to thank Shaleen Tidal for coming out, because there's often a lot of thoughts that Western Massachusetts is, is left off the map, that there's, there's this Big C of Boston, and there's a little island of Worcester, and then the RV Monsters after that. And so thank you for recognizing that, that there's, there is, there is something further down on I-90 and coming out to, to, to be here tonight.
And it's East Hampton.
Yes.
Come on up, Kareem.
Good evening. My name is Kareema Risk, and I live at 38 Everett Street in East Hampton. I'm here to urge you to pass the equity amendment before you today. The state of equity in Massachusetts, forgive me for saying so, I think, is feeble and on life support. The economic empowerment program has struggled to get off the ground, and only four economic empowerment applicants have been granted provisional licensing, at least last I checked. Massachusetts has witnessed a true green rush with wealthy out-of-state operators flocking to open cannabis businesses. The current business environment with caps on licenses and few stores open favors those who can afford the exorbitant cost, hire lobbyists and consultants, and ensure the lengthy, endure the lengthy licensing periods. Unfortunately, equity applicants and local residents have been left behind in the dust without an opportunity to enter the market. The trend can be seen here in East Hampton with out-of-state operators and multi-state organizations opening retail stores. It is extremely urgent and important to protect the opportunity for equity applicants to apply for cannabis businesses, including adult-use retail stores. Massachusetts law puts forth a mandate to ensure, quote-unquote, "the meaningful participation in the cannabis industries of communities disproportionately affected by the enforcement of previous cannabis laws, small businesses, and companies led by people of color, women, veterans, and farmers." The CCC has further empowered local municipalities to customize their ordinance to fit the fabric of our communities. East Hampton is a community that leads by example and supports diversity and inclusion from transgender rights and immigration to civic engagement and education. The cannabis industry is no exception. Equity needs protection, or it'll be stamped out by monopolies. Adopting the equity amendment will slow down further development of cannabis retailers. One has only to look at how long it has taken well-funded cannabis ventures to get off the ground, including five potential East Hampton retailers who have already held community outreach meetings as part of their licensing application process. Almost one year after the CCC began accepting retailer applications, only three of the existing five retailers have been granted provisional adult-use licensing and special permitting. It will take even longer for small, local equity entrepreneurs to navigate the complicated hurdles of securing a property, capitalization, licensing, and permitting, and business development. I would speculate that two years, the time mentioned before for review of this ordinance, after, if it were passed, will likely not be enough time for a local diverse cannabis industry to develop. I would put that closer to five years, or even later. The equity amendment seeks to build the foundation for a local diverse cannabis industry to thrive. Some may ask, do potential local equity applicants who will apply for these permits already exist? The answer is that it is too early to tell, but it is critical that we protect the opportunity for equity applicants to have a chance at participation in the cannabis industry. No one could have predicted that East Hampton would have five adult-use retailers applying for special permitting one and a half years ago, in 2017, when the adult-use cannabis ordinance was passed. At that time, we wanted to ensure that East Hampton put forth our best effort to create a robust, responsible, and progressive cannabis, local cannabis industry. And the promise was that we would come back to the amendment, and amend what we didn't get right, and take into consideration the new market developments. It is critical, as Counselor Zaretz mentioned, that we set the foundation now to create a diverse, equitable, local cannabis industry in East Hampton. So I urge you all to pass this amendment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Anyone else want to talk? Please come on up.
Stephen Linsky from River Valley Way. Last time, I guess it was about a year and a half ago, we were discussing this. At the outset of the program, I participated as a volunteer then for the East Hampton Healthy Youth Coalition. I have no prepared remarks, but I have both one comment and one question. And first, again, thanks for the folks in the Cannabis Commission. I've attended their hearings in the past. They work very hard, and they've been given very significant tasks, so they ought to be congratulated for coming out here. The comment is this. There's nothing specific about the equity provision that I would want to speak to, but it's being occasioned at the same time by an enlargement of the program. And what we talked about last time in terms of the numbers of licenses is that we were going to find a starting point, right, that hit some balance, right? Find a starting point, and then we would see what our experience led us to do. Well, you know, by dint of what is being attempted here, we're enlarging the program before we even have an opportunity to see what the experience is. We're enlarging the program before dollar one is spent on any education, and there was a lot of discussion about that. We're enlarging the program before dollar one is spent on any additional enforcement. So that is the problem, seems to me, is that we were, we all, we kind of agreed that we were going to strike this balance and move forward together based on the experience. Well, this is moving forward together based on no experience. And if there's an attempt to, to look at the equity provision, which is fine, we should think of a different way of doing it. Look, it's no surprise to anyone, because at the very, way back when, when the vote was taken and the initiative was enacted, that lots of folks thought that big tobacco, that big cannabis would become what big tobacco has become, and that'd be a large economic interest. That shouldn't shock anybody. And if you look at the enabling legislation, it contemplated that, okay? So in all fairness, if the idea of providing equity was, you know, of critical importance, and I think it's worthy of consideration, it could have been done at the very beginning, too. Or for that matter, it can be done now. Change the language. It doesn't necess, does not necessitate the additional licenses. We only have, if I understand the discussion here, there's only really three that has been advanced to any, you know, any significant point, and others pending. So I suggest change the language, and, you know, put in equity, and take the program from there. It doesn't require, you know, additional licensures, and shouldn't require additional licensures until we see what our program is, and see what our needs are, and figure out ways to address them, as we had talked about at the very outset. My question is this, and maybe Jeff, you know the answer or whatever, transferability of licenses. What is the, what is the provision relative to transferability?
If you're, I, I believe that there's a process at the state level to transfer a license. There's an application process through the commission, but at the local level, there is no current, under the three special permits that have been granted, there is no ownership or, you know, any, any provision that would prevent them from changing or transferring.
And we kind of see this because this is what was thought of. People will get licenses and immediately kind of transfer them because they become valuable, right? So let me ask you this. If you were to create now these equity licenses, what stops anyone who has one of them from transferring to a non-equity?
Well, I think the board has, I think we had that discussion, and I think there is an acknowledgement of that fact that was discussed, that this would be a special permit issued to a specific set of owners that would be tied to that, that set of owners without, you know, any changes would have to come.
We talked about creating an ownership document that's specific.
Okay, but that differs from special permitting in general, right, because it's permitting that runs with the, with the land, not with the owners. Now you're suggesting that in fact, at the local level, it would run with the owners? You're saying if the transfer process is on the state level, how's it work here?
For this equity application, it would. Sorry.
No, that's okay.
And I mean, that's really the answer. For this equity application, there is this special criteria that requires this document of ownership proof. So that's a layer on top of everything else, and that's what prevents your transferability.
It would have to be maintained throughout the special permit.
It's well documented in state, in zoning case law, that you can connect a special permit to ownership. It's just in the, in the previous iterations, the board had not done that, so I think it's something that's more closely.
I think it's a good question, though. I mean, it's something definitely we...
Well, yeah, I want to just understand, I mean, it works both ways, too. I mean, we could mandate that, that licenses that may have been granted originally that we're, we're calling now non-equity licenses, right, can only be transferred to equity licenses, too. I mean, the point being, there are many ways to build an equity, right? What's being suggested is that we're, you know, that you're building an equity by significantly adding to the program, right? That isn't the only way about it. And that's my point. But thank you very much.
Thank you. I think a bunch of people are going to want to respond, I'm seeing. I'm going to toss just one thing in, because I think you brought some good questions. You know what, actually, I think I'm going to toss this to you guys. You guys want to jump in, go for it?
Well, actually, what I'm thinking is, you know, I'm, I'm almost at the point where I think we have a couple of good things to look at. You know, adding that language, looking at the ownership that Planner Bag was, you know, looking at potentially having a way to establish that. And then, you know, I think maybe looking at continuing this and, you know, opening up zero lot lines.
That sounds good. I just want to toss one thing in, the thing that I put, hold on just one second, which is this discussion of numbers. Because now that we've kind of really gone through what the criteria are, the one comment I wanted to make to the gentleman that just spoke, you may have just, oh, there he is, sorry. I really look at it differently. What the proposal is, as it stands right now, is to take one of the last license, the sixth, and we do have four people that are in the works. I'm not sure if we'll get one free, but, you know, it looks, it looks like, five even. But it looks like by taking the sixth one and moving it to non-equity, from my perspective, that isn't expanding without evaluating. And I do think more evaluation, more time is helpful. That's removing a license, because this is going to be a very dramatic slowdown process, a pause. So really, doing this is exactly the opposite of adding. Adding three really, really slow permits that are really hard to get, and removing one of the fast, easy ones for people who have money, that's, that's not adding to me. That's slowing things down. So I just, a matter of perspective. Do you want to postpone the discussion of the number to the last?
I would just say that we continue it, and then as we come back next time, we can marinate.
What date is next for a potential continuation?
Subject to some discussion. The next planning board meeting is May 21st, but I would beg that, not go to that, because I don't think the, given other things that are happening, there's not enough time to compile that.
Yep, that's fine.
Something like June 4th would be the subsequent next planning board meeting, if we follow this pattern, which is Tuesday.
That's fine, that's actually our, our normal meeting.
I think I would recommend June 4th.
Six o'clock?
Yeah.
I'll need a motion to continue the cannabis equity public hearing till June 4th at six o'clock?
So moved.
Sir, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Okay.
I'll take a motion.
I'll make a move to continue to the current discussion of cannabis equity to June 4th.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Is everyone just going to meet this deadline? That's a difference.
Okay. So next on our agenda, we have the 6:30 public hearing, or are we at seven o'clock? To, public hearing to amend section six, table 6-1. Did you have something you wanted to toss in?
Oh, just a second.
I just had to step out for a second.
Okay. And 6-2 to eliminate the setback lot area coverage and frontage requirements for new lots in the Mill Industrial District. Do you need to open that as a public hearing as well, or?
Yeah, might as well.
Motion to open to talk about zero lot lines.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and here we go. So we have a document, there's some new stuff in there. Oh geez, you know, in that last thing, there were some letters I was supposed to read, and I guess I'll have to do that last time. I forgot that.
There's some three letters in there that...
Yeah, I slipped my mind. All right, so we're looking at...
Well, maybe he should get them.
No, we'll get to that.
He has them.
He has them.
All right. We had a lot of questions. Last time we were here, there was a bit of a curveball you threw, Jeff, about new possible uses that could be applied in this zoning, I think. You mentioned something in East Works that added in some zero lot line issues. I remember that there had been some discussion about, you know, I posed the question, like, what really are the disadvantages to this? You know, in the mills, it seems positive, and Jesse brought up some good points, that new construction could happen, and that, that could be a possible issue. And another issue with this could be mill industrial that's next to residential, that zero lot line. And that really, for me, are the two things that I definitely want to cover tonight. But we should probably give a synopsis of what this is. Do you want to?
Sure. So it began, and it's still sort of dubbed zero lot lines. It started with looking at the table of dimensions for the Mill Industrial District, which sets out a frontage requirement of 100 feet, side yard setback of, I mean... I hear people saying it, but I don't see it. So 15 feet, and a front yard setback of 30 feet. So, so there's a couple pieces of information that build on that, but it started as potentially making it so a building could be placed on the property lines, hence the zero lot line. And through the discussion, so I have a memo that's up on the screen and is available, but so March 20th, the planning board definitely voted to recommend it, go to zoning subcommittee. And then during the working subcommittee, some of these other questions came up. The owner of a property in the Mill District was present and described the, sort of the nature of the proposal, as it applies to the potential redevelopment of One Berry Street. And since then, the owner of East Works has also expressed support for the amendment in concept. So the, the purpose of the amendment has evolved, and the goal is to remove dimensional requirements for the creation of a lot, i.e. a parcel. And this is where we took a shift. So some of the questions that came up were concerns that if you create zero lot line opportunities in the Mill District, a new building could, could pop up and utilize that, that new flexibility. And so there was concerns about sort of the location of such a building, the, the design of a building, and how it might interact with the character of the Mill District. So I'm looking at this a little bit further in discussion. So, in looking at this a little bit further, in discussion with the, sort of, the proponent and other property owners, the primary goal is to be able to make a parcel around existing buildings. And I think there's a little bit more that we can discuss about that. But to eliminate the possibility of unknowns, we've narrowed the focus of this to give the flexibility to existing buildings in the Mill District. And so, that eliminates concerns about a building popping up that would be oddly placed, or abutting another building where you might block, like a residence view and things like that, so.
Could you state that again? I want to make sure, you've done what? What's the modification?
So, that this amendment would be, would apply only to existing buildings.
Only to existing buildings? You're stating it will not apply to new construction?
Correct.
And, but what about residential? I mean, isn't that still, I guess if it's not new construction, it won't matter, right? That's the logic.
Right, and we feel like, so there's a pattern of development in the Mill District, and there's a bunch of maps and information we have here, but the pattern of development in the Mill District is desirable. And in order for some of the property owners to continue to revitalize these buildings, by creating a distinct parcel, it frees up a bunch of different funding mechanisms and opportunities for reinvestment in the parcel, separate from a larger parcel. I think there should be a little bit to speak to that a little bit more eloquently. But where I left off here, the last thing that came up, and I'll just throw it off quick, was the issue of frontage. So, what we're proposing is that, this is sentence number two in the paragraph, the ability to create distinct parcels around buildings within the Mill and the Mill District has been identified as a key step in creating opportunities for the potential sale and/or transfer of the property. The ability to separate a building on a distinct parcel, from, a distinct parcel from the larger mill buildings on a larger parcel is intended to further support and allow the continued revitalization of older mill buildings. So, during the initial review of the amendment, it evolved to a flexible zoning tool greater than just zero lot lines. If a building can provide access pursuant to the building code and ADA, it should be eligible to exist on a distinct parcel. Since parking is not required for new uses in the Mill District, the need to require parking doesn't really apply. So, I'm just going to read this, if that's okay.
Please.
Okay, so initially, some concerns were raised as to whether this would create unknown opportunities to construct new buildings that may or may not be in keeping with the historic mill building development pattern. Because the primary focus has been clarified to allow for the revitalization of existing buildings, the amendment is intended to offer lot creation flexibility that's only in association with an existing building. Finally, questions about the need for frontage have come up. It's important to understand that frontage requirements only came into existence under modern zoning. So, the city's first zoning ordinance was created in 1951. This was established long after the historic mill building development pattern was created. So, the application of 100 feet of frontage in the Mill District doesn't reflect the pattern, and was, and, you know, the frontage concept was much more commonly applied to residential subdivisions in a way to separate lots going out, create area. And I actually did include an excerpt of the 1951 zoning ordinance, which actually shows that at that point in time, they didn't require frontage, they didn't require area, and they didn't require setbacks. So, in a complete twist of irony, it's taken more than 50 years to see that this was actually a constraint, and we're going back to try to eliminate that constraint. So, the last thing here is that, again, if a building can provide adequate pedestrian access and vehicular movements in proximity, it will, it can provide the net effect of what frontage is intended to do, which is provide access. So, I think that's kind of the overarching, big picture view, and the amendment itself in the zoning ordinance is marked up, is quite simple. If I scroll through, what happens in this table of dimensions is, in the Mill Industrial, we're keeping 100 feet of frontage, 30 feet front, 15 side, and 30 rear for new buildings. So, that provision would still exist for the new development, and what happens is there's a superscript 10, there's a footnote 10, and that's really what we're talking about here, which is, in the Mill Industrial District, a new lot needing created around an existing building containing no minimum setbacks, area coverage, or frontage, if the said building can provide access in accordance with the building code. So, it's really intended to just simplify this to, to really sort of some of the needs that have been identified.
And the 30, 15, 30 is the predefined?
It's predefined, and that's for if you are creating a new lot, and you're going to build a brand new building, and those provisions apply. We can cross that bridge later, it doesn't seem to be the need at the moment to help the mill owners.
Do you want to discuss or open it up?
Well, I just want to ask one quick question. So, have we considered, will new construction include additions to existing buildings? So, I just want to make sure that we're not going to limit it without, accidentally. You know, for example, if one of the One Ferry Street buildings needs to have an elevator, and that has to be new construction on addition to the existing building, are we going to, are we pigeonholing ourselves here with that? Or are we going to put, you know, an alteration that's 50% of the, you know, I just want to make sure that we're not going to stick ourselves.
I think that's a good thought. I think the idea is to allow, you know, really, so the goal is very specific, so, and I know that the property owner's here, so an owner of Eastworks can speak to this, but Eastworks is on one large parcel, and there are multiple buildings. So, the clear intent of this is to be able to create a lot that would allow for the revitalization, so the renovation of an existing building.
Sure.
So, I think within that, we want to incorporate some footprint changes, as long as, you know, a renovation is what we're expecting. And in the case of One Ferry Street property, there are a lot of, there's a lot of building work going on, all of which has been kind of clarified by the planning boards that qualifies as a renovation of existing buildings.
Good. I just want to make sure that we're clear that renovation of existing buildings is okay, and would still qualify under the zero lot line.
And you just proposed some language saying that, what, 50%? What was it that you?
Well, I was just throwing it out there. I mean, sometimes, like, you know, there'll be a percentage requirement, if a certain percentage over the existing footprint is being altered, then it would trigger. But, you know, for this, I think, you know, as long as we're saying the existing, the existing building can have modifications and still qualify.
I think what we want to do is, we want to tie it to renovation, it's defined in the building code. I think that's where we were at with some of the work on One Ferry Street properties, that it qualifies as a renovation of an existing building.
So, if a building had a zero lot line right now, and they took, completely tore it down, and built an entirely new building, that's new construction, right? So, then they'd have to comply with this zoning, and they wouldn't be able to put it back the same way.
They'd have to have 100 foot frontage, 30 foot front.
30 foot, yeah.
How are you tying it to renovation?
Well, you know, I mean, the owner, the prospective owner of One Ferry is also here. I mean, the planning board had a discussion about the redevelopment of one of the buildings on that site that is adjacent to the canal.
Right.
And the canal wall is the building wall and the foundation for the entire structure. So, in that case, the planning board and the building inspector was in agreement that because that foundation was so substantially the canal, that you could actually take the building down, and keeping that structure, the foundation wall, and it qualifies as a renovation. So, I think there's a lot of leeway here, as long as.
As long as there's leeway. I didn't, I just didn't want it to hamster.
Leeway and written in a way so that 10 years from now, a future board, or 20 years, or whatever it is, will be able to understand the intent without having to go back and.
Watch the video.
Watch. They'll have orbs then, not DVD.
Plug it into your brain.
So, anyway, that brings us to the question then, really how we tie this, because you're, we're talking about tying it to renovation, but like, where is that language going to go, and what is that language?
Building code.
I mean, I think that the language would simply go in this note 10.
Where is note 10?
It's right here.
I'm trying to find it.
Oh. That's how, I mean, ideally, we'd be, we'd be overhauling the whole zoning, there's a lot of footnotes. Things are just buried in those footnotes, but that's the way it is right now. You know, it's, I don't think, I think it's a little bit of wordsmithing, that we could probably work on a little bit now to clarify the intent, and then have that potentially be moved to the next hearing level. But it's around an existing building, you know, or, you know, I, maybe I need to think about it for a minute, but it's really just around a, you know, existing building or renovation thereof. I mean, I think it's not too complicated to make that.
Do you want to hear from the public while he?
Yeah, let's open it up.
Who wants to speak? Come on up. I promise, my phone is off this time.
Good evening again. Mr. Zarvis, I just assumed in 20 years, you would still be on this board. I'm disappointed to.
Not after that phone thing.
So, I, you know, this topic for me is attached actually to the last matter before you, around opportunity and around, again, progressive, as in moving forward, look at how we develop and open our small local economy to those who might look elsewhere, or, more importantly, be shut out of other smaller markets. I mean, I think that there is a nano-economy now that exists in the Mill District, and I think that that was so because of some vision and willingness, and maybe a little bit of crazy?
Crazy.
Yeah, okay. Not to put, you know, at least for one of the mill owners, I won't speak for any others. And now, the next step is to protect that, that culture in those buildings, and what is before you tonight, in the clear intent, for me, really goes one step forward to preserving that. The historical context that we're flipping it back is fascinating, I didn't know about that. But also, when we're talking about revitalization, sustainable and long-term revitalization of these 40R districts, they are a flexible-moving tool, and go very nicely in the Mill District with the opportunity zone, with the housing choice, with the diff district, you know, and so many other changes this board and in the past and now are considering to keep that vibrancy going forward. And I can only imagine, when we look at state and federal dollars, as well as local incentive dollars that we can leverage, the way we are going in that district now only makes us stronger, but also what is before you makes us stronger because it helps the mill owners and those who want to go inside the mill owners. So, I would urge passage, once word smithed by the board and by the committee. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
No?
You're just going to let that crazy stand?
The crazies can stand.
Ladies, would like, if you have any questions, I mean, I'm, it wasn't happy to answer.
I have a question for the mill owners, but have we resolved the issues about where these have abutted residential neighborhoods?
That was exactly what I was going to ask, is how about.
Certainly, don't build right up to a house.
Yeah, do you have any?
I mean, that is eliminated by the confining it to an existing or renovated building, so.
I can speak to that.
The Mill District is, was way more buildings than exists. So, like, my complex is, you know, the main building's number six, I have a building eight, I have a building two, I have a building seven, I have a five, a four, there are all these different buildings. But a large portion of them were just a roof that was built between existing buildings. So, that if you look on, I forget what page it is, but there's, this is, this is a very helpful diagram here on this page, because along what was, what became the parking in the back, you see all these dotted lines that are actually buildings that then got moved in. And what it, what it changes, at least from Eastworks experience, what changes, and what really Mike already saw in terms of how he's putting his project together. I am a banker's nightmare. I am, I'm not residential, I'm not commercial, I'm not industrial, I'm not office. Bankers run a sensibility of risk that is such that they only give you money if you don't need it. And so, that level of risk is rigorous. Once you start adding all these other, if you start adding residential with office, they go, eh, eh. If you start adding industrial on top of that, as soon as you multiply all the different things, it sort of shreds their, their way of evaluating, and then they're just looking at you at net operating income. And it means that your choices within that equation, I hope, I hope you're following me, but your choices within that equation mean that they're putting everything against the value of your whole building, as opposed to the value of an actual endeavor. So, I have a 2,000 square foot building that people are texting me about, they're posting it on Instagram, it's getting Facebooked, it's a very popular building, I'm not going to touch it, because it requires probably 300, 400, $500,000 to fix it up. And my bank is going to concede the income from it as this little blip. And it's not going to move the dial that I need to move.
I understand, that actually wasn't the question. That's interesting information.
No, well, I just wanted to give that background, because I think it's important. And I think it's totally relevant to how he's framing out his business plan over there.
So, up the street on Pleasant, I think it's, there's the plastics, it was a plastics place that wanted to put the big addition on the back, and it was right against the bike path, and all the residents came, and there was, so now, under this ordinance, that person could expand their building, and it could go right up to the bike path, to the zero lot line. Is that correct?
That's, no, that, if I may, that property is in the, just industrial.
Okay, so it's strictly for Mill Industrial. So, that only deals with Ferry, thank you, that only deals with Ferry Street and the Mill and, the Mill Works building.
There is a map. It does come down, I mean, in full disclosure, it runs the length of Lower Mill Pond, it covers, I'm going to forget the name, the larger mill building that's still actually in manufacturing operation, sorry.
National Building.
Can you point out some possible, I mean, I think you're trying to do it now, but like, on the map, like, where are the residential abutters?
Would be, right, I mean.
It would be at.
Where are your residential abutters?
Would be October Company.
Residential abutters, do you have them?
Uh, in my front yard and to, going towards town, there's another one.
Across the.
Oh, yeah, there's that, what, is that the house?
The Carter Street Apartments, there's residential right on Adams Street.
Why is that relevant to?
Well, we're looking at it because, you know, we're trying to lock out, as he did here, and he being Jeff, on page 4.2 in section 10, that, that zero lot line district, except where the building abuts a residential zoning district. We want to maintain that in there. But in figuring that, and seeing the necessity for the language, we want to know, are there residential things that are abutting? And where are they?
So, there's an abut, there's an abut to the main building, which does have residential or in it, and other, and it's already clear for all sorts of different processes, so I'm not.
But it's in the residential zone?
It's a bit of a moot point, because if we're, if we're talking about existing buildings, then we're not talking about building new buildings.
Right.
So, it has to be in addition to an existing building, not necessarily another building on an existing building's lot.
And if we're talking about additions.
Well, that's where the renovation piece comes in.
Well, I mean, it's an open question. I mean, I think that we're, we're not really talking about significant additions, we're talking about significant renovations. So, there is a footprint, you know, expectation with most of these, I mean, I think that the property on One Ferry Street is distinct in that it's the wall of the canal, it's bound to be the foundation wall of the buildings, and there's a renovation, there's a renovation there. The planning board already decided that along with the building inspector. So, from there on out, it's really just substantial renovations of the existing structure.
I just think that wordsmithing that language is important.
Well, and, I mean, and if you look at the footprint of the area that we're talking about, it really, you know, for Eastworks, it doesn't, you know, it's, it's, doesn't make any sense for them to expand over their, you know, gap of a canal towards the residential. I mean, so it's just like, if we're, if we're looking at the actual land that we're talking about, you know, it's inconceivable that there would be an addition that would abut residences.
The only one I could think of is the one heading toward town from you, which is sort of like a driving in area.
Buttonham Court, yeah.
That's the only thing that would even vaguely apply.
And what we're trying to do, again, is remember, we're preparing for an exercise of drawing a new parcel boundary around a building. I mean, that's, it is quite as simple as being able to draw the boundary around the building to accommodate the transfer of ownership, or sale, or having a separate ownership structure of that parcel.
Frankly, I think the language you already put in 10 covers it, as far as residential is concerned, I think that.
Yeah, I think, I think to.
Okay, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure that we don't get someone coming in, because, you know, and they say, hey, this is building, putting a house, or putting a building right up next to mine.
Right, that was the earlier question, and I think that was a totally legitimate question under the, it was a little bit more free, and I think, you know, in discussion with primarily with mill owners, you know, the primary goal is to be able to parcel the primary goal is to be able to parcel off around existing buildings. I mean, that's really in line with what we're trying to do with the Mills anyway. So I think that's, that's the expectation.
I'd like to kind of get a sense of where the planning board's at with this. Unless you have major other issues to cover in this, really for me, it just comes to wordsmithing that one thing and bringing in renovations into that kind of line to protect. Other than that, I personally think this is important to do, think we should support what the mayor said and feel the same way about it. I think we should approve this. Let's start with you, Chad. Do you have any feelings about this?
No, I think it's...
Okay. All right, Harry?
No, it's fine.
I think it's fine.
Find a way.
All right, so next steps here, is this simply the planning board is going to recommend this to the, to the city council or what's the process for this?
Yep, we'll insert a little language, which I actually think is very simple to add. The planning board would vote to recommend approval by the full city council, and that could move as quickly as, so it goes to the supplement, the, sorry, the ordinance subcommittee would also make the same recommendation at their meeting this week.
Well, I mean, you know, historically, we've done it a few different ways, you know, and I'm not opposed to us voting tonight if my fellow counselors are, and then, so basically then we would have, if you voted tonight and it was affirmative, then we voted to bring it to the full council, then all we'd have to do is set the public hearing.
Right, because this is in effect is your meeting for the, right?
Correct.
We were talking about June 1st as a target to...
June 1st.
Yep, that would be, oh yes.
Go ahead.
Jeff, so if I, if I may, so if you're gonna wordsmith, can we kind of do that together now?
Oh, absolutely. I was gonna say, we need to lock it in.
That was a very good, you know, Sam brought up a very good point, and I don't know why I didn't think of that, it slipped me, but that, that's the point. If you wanna add an elevator or there's things that have to happen outside the existing building envelope, we need the flexibility to be able to do that.
Right.
Do you think those are all about access egress and accessibility, or do you think that, or do you think building systems, or where do you...
I don't think I would wanna be, I think it's better, I think it's better to go a percent, yeah, of volume, whether it's, you know, 25% of the existing, I don't think you need to technically, I mean, we're creating law going forward here, you know, we're violating. I don't know, 50%? I guess, you know, it depends on the size of the building too. If you have a little small building and you have 50%, it's not like if you're, you know, if it's a, it's a small footprint versus a football field. That's a different impact.
So it's, is it a percent of footprint or is it a percent of volume?
Isn't this what 100% coverage calls it?
Another alternative that Jeff put forward to using the percentage was to tie it to the pre-existing renovation language. Have you come forward with anything there?
Well, if you look at the sentence up here, so it's in the Mill Industrial District, a new lot may be created around an existing building. And what I had written here was in parentheses, including a substantially renovated building, containing no minimum setbacks, area coverage. I mean, there is a percentage question, but I'd almost rather...
Just avoid it entirely.
...in the term of renovation, substantially renovation.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, and I think what it does is it gives a little bit more flex, more flexibility.
Yeah.
And, and I think that especially as we look at One Ferry Street, flexibility is gonna be an important factor. So I don't know if we necessarily, the only reason I threw percentage out is, you know, because at some point in my career here, that was something that we've done before. But I don't necessarily know that in this circumstance, we'd have to do it again, you know?
Right. Well, certain percentage of value, you know, you increase the building by a certain percentage of value, you're gonna trip ADA. So we're cognizant of that. What I was proposing in this language on the screen is, in the Mill Industrial District, a new lot may be created around an existing building, parentheses, including a substantially renovated building, and then continue on.
And that's it?
And I think that where we wanna have this end up is in the building code to allow that for a substantially renovated building, certain pursuant to the building code, because I think that's a lot of what's gonna be happening is you're gonna be doing substantial renovations pursuant to the building code.
You're losing me as to how that deals with the issue of footprint funding or something. I'm not following.
I don't think that, I guess I would be suggesting that we don't really wanna tie a footprint percentage here. We'd rather tie it to a significant renovation under the building code.
So the limitation is the word significant renovation?
Which is defined in the building code?
Renovation is. The question is what significant means?
Yeah, because significant can be defined by anybody.
And so that, so who would make that determination?
That's a qualifier.
Well, I mean, it's what?
A building inspector would make the determination.
As to what is significant and what is not significant?
And that way, a new construction wouldn't qualify because it's new construction.
I actually think significant is pretty good because it's a clear indicator that...
The other, the other thing that's really, I mean, what you're also dealing with is that if you have, if you've, if you've created the lot and you're doing the renovation, then your footprint and your determination is already within that lot. So it's not like you can go crazy.
Right, exactly.
It's built into that, okay.
We're trying to create more flexibility.
Does that make sense, Mike?
Yeah.
Is everyone happy with that language on the board?
Yeah.
Sure. In that case, we're looking for a motion to recommend the ordinance subcommittee the approval of the zero lot line zoning modifications. Is there such a motion?
Sam will.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against or abstentions? Excuse me, I'm tired. It's you, Anna?
And I would love to see a motion from the ordinance subcommittee to approve the zero lot lines to send to the full council as amended.
I will move that.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Yeah, absolutely, I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no abstentions. So now, you know, I think as long as we get the written recommendation, but we know what your recommendation is, I'll set the public hearing for the June 1st meeting.
Perfect.
So at the full council.
Excellent. This is good for the city.
Yeah.
I don't think it's the June 1st meeting, it's June...
June 4th, I'm sorry. First meeting in June.
It's the first meeting in June.
Keep doing that. Yeah, thanks.
All right.
Counselor.
Do you need to close your...
Yeah, can I motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those agree?
Aye.
Okay, we're closed.
Okay.
Thanks.
It's great working with you guys. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda because our evenings are always late here at the planning board. 7:15, we were supposed to start, we're a little late. Thank you so much for your patience. Bank of America seeking a special permit to construct a walk-up ATM kiosk, including associated site improvements, including sight lighting, ADA parking areas, sidewalk and signs under section 37 of table 5.1 and 12.7 of the zoning ordinance at 126 North Hampton Street, parcel ID 128/96 located in the Highway Business Zoning District. That's a mouthful. Tell us about it.
I just wanted to describe the project and the application, so...
Please do. All right.
As well.
Here we go.
So long. Very, very few funds, I was very disappointed.
I said a few months ago.
All right, folks, let's do this.
Good evening, members and chairman of the board. My name is Matt Lingam. I'm with Stonefield Engineering. I'm here representing Bank of America for the proposed walk-up ATM at 126 North Hampton Street. We're proposing our ATM within an existing shopping center. It's within the highway business zone and it require, it's a, it's a use permitted, an ATM is a use permitted by special permit from the planning board, which is why we're here today. So we are proposing a walk-up ATM within the center of the parking area located within the existing shopping center. The ATM will face east towards North Hampton Street. We're providing 1 ADA accessible parking space as well as an access aisle to provide ADA accessibility to the ATM. There will be a loss of three parking spaces for the site, however, while we are overparked in the sense that we will have a total of 90 spaces proposed, where 77 are required for the existing shopping center. We are not requesting any variances. And then during our design, we had, as the engineer, we noticed a large uncontrollable open area of asphalt within the parking area. So we did propose a curb island with landscaping to provide a little bit better circulation for customers to traverse the site a little bit more efficiently rather than just an open area of asphalt. We are proposing seven area lights and three ATM canopy lights to bring the site into compliance with, with Bank of America standards. Safety and security is paramount for Bank of America. They tend to wanna lean towards safety and security for their customers utilizing this ATM. It is an ATM that's gonna be open 24 hour, or accessible 24/7. So it's gonna be accessible at night, and we do wanna provide as much illumination for the ATM as possible. So anyone using it late at night has that sense of security while utilizing the ATM. The proposed light fixtures are proposed at 15 feet mounting height, which is the maximum mounting height of the, of the town. We're proposing 140 LEDs for the lights, and the LEDs are recessed within the light fixture so there's, as to reduce glare and be a nuisance for passerbyers on Route, on North Hampton. So in addition, we had talked with Jeffrey about the potential for negative impacts for traffic. However, we did do a study through our, through our company to show that, we used trip generation for IT, using the IT manual, and showed that the ATM will not propose any negative impact. ATMs are specifically located on or adjacent to busy streets to attract motorists already on the, on the roadway, already utilizing the existing shopping center. So the percentages of customers utilizing the ATM are already kind of en route to an ultimate destination. So we're able to, based on our analysis, there are only a total of around 22 new vehicles entering the site for, during peak hours during the weekday, 27 during the weekday evening peak hour, and 28 during the Saturday peak hour. Now, based on the percentages, there's six of those were passerbyers already for the weekday peak hour, 10 were the weekday evening peak hour, and 10 were also the Saturday peak hour. So about like 50% of them were already accessing the site.
So 18 new at peak Saturday?
Exactly, exactly. So we do meet the parking demand, so there's no negative impact on the parking supply. And the average transaction time for one of these ATMs is about two minutes for a walk-up ATM. So there will be quick turnover for customers utilizing the site.
Question about that.
Yes.
And I'm gonna wanna back up. I wanna let you finish your presentation, but I just wanna touch on some questions here, things you touched on. We're gonna go on lighting in a bit, but about this traffic survey here, there's a site circulation header, and I was really interested in seeing it because that was one of the big things that I wanted to see in this. I know, having gone into that lot many times, that the issue for me is the way people move and they come, it's big, open spaces, they drive across lanes, and it can be a little chaotic in there. I really wanted to see how the circulation was gonna go.
Okay.
It's clear to me in here, and we can discuss it, that you do meet the requirements for the number of parking spaces and allotments, and I see that you're occupying the two zones, one with the island and one with the actual ATM. But what I didn't see is how you intend traffic to flow. There's a Dunkin' Donuts, which is gonna have people coming in and out, there's people going back to flurry outdoor power, there's an exit that goes out to, what's the name of that street there?
Florence Road.
No, the, yes, Florence Road, thank you. And I know that Florence Road especially, people are used to just coming at, you know, they can come from next to the...
Yeah, I actually accessed the site today through Florence.
It's crazy. I don't see in here any circulation, like what's your intended traffic flow? Which direction are people coming into the ATM from? Where are they gonna go? And how do you intend that your ATM will affect the entire plaza's traffic flow? Not the parking, the flow?
Yeah. So once again, we proposed that curb island to try and help the traffic flow. Obviously, we expect most people to be coming in off of North Hampton. So that's like this, the curb island that we proposed is at the front of the site. We did provide the sufficient 25 to 24-foot drive aisle lanes to provide vehicles two-way traffic to access the site.
That's important.
So it does divide the site up a little bit more efficiently than it is currently today to provide that access to the ATM as well as to the Dunkin' Donuts. So vehicles can kind of choose a different route to go towards the ATM to the right or towards the Dunkin' Donuts to the left of the site.
So you intend this is gonna be an improvement to the chaos that it currently is?
That, that was our intent with the curb island, was to efficiently provide better circulation for the site. Obviously, we didn't want people just cutting across the full lane of asphalt that was just already existing to access our ATM while cutting off lanes coming from Dunkin' Donuts or vice versa, the shopping center. So we did provide this curb island to allow vehicles to take a different directed route rather than cutting across traffic.
Can we see this, Jeff? Do you, do you have a map that you can, like the site plan for instance, that we could pull up on the big screen? Or if you have it big there, that'd be fine. But I just kinda want you to point out to me, I mean, it's clear that people are gonna come in from North Hampton Street in here, and I just, are you intending that they kinda go around the island or to the right of the island? Like, where are they going?
So vehicles entering from North Hampton Street can kind of take this right towards our ATM, which is a little bit north forced than it was originally. Originally, without this island, they would kind of take a direct path straight across that asphalt area. Now they have an option to kind of go to the left of the island, access the Dunkin' Donuts here, or if they're gonna use the ATM, circulate to the right and then access the parking spaces along here or the other parking spaces we have re-struck based on asphalt reconstruction. Also, if they do come in from Florence Road, they do have the ability to either access the parking spaces in front of the ATM, or if they do plan to come around here, we do have that separation. So a vehicle coming from Florence can kind of access the ATM from the south side while also providing a buffer between any cars entering North Hampton.
Okay. I actually do, looking at this, think that that will force traffic into more regulated flow as opposed to just what it's been. Any comment on that one issue while we're at it?
I think it's a great improvement.
Yeah, it is an improvement. It's gonna be 24/7, right?
Yes, 24/7 ATM. That is correct.
Okay.
And it's all lit up, it's all gonna be lit up all night long.
Yeah, yup. It's gonna be lit up. We are in a commercial district, so we did take a look at the uses around the shopping center, and they do all seem to appear to be commercial.
You've got a lot of cameras set up there too, and then they'll LED and DM and stuff like that?
So the ATM does come with security features such as, such as a security camera, however, the, the bank tends to have like the lighting as their main security focal point.
And I see 10 lights, they're different grades, different types, but overall 10 lights is...
So seven of the lights are gonna be area lights, and then three are enclosed within the ATM canopy itself. So it comes as part of the...
Yeah, those are the baton LEDs.
Yup, exactly.
Okay. And are these downward facing?
Downward facing lights, recessed, full cutoff LED light fixtures.
Okay. That certainly seems like a lot of lights, but it manages to not go into anywhere where I see any wetlands or woodlands or anything of that sort. So that all seems appropriate to me. Any questions about lights?
And it doesn't extend into, we try and eliminate the extension of the illumination into the roadway, so we try to cut it off as best as we can. Obviously, we have to keep this, this 60-foot illumination radius for bank standards to two-foot handles or higher. And then meeting that with the town's requirement of 15-foot mounting heights was why we proposed seven light fixtures opposed to four, let's say, so...
What's the maintenance on the ATM like? Is there gonna be people, you know, coming in?
I think once a week, there will be a truck that comes, kind of does the money handling, and then maybe once a month, there'll be any, if there's any issues with the ATM, a truck can come and access the ATM from the backside, so...
It's minor at best. And this is just like a Brink's truck, this is not a big truck.
No, exactly. It's just like one of those armored trucks you see kind of circulating the roadways.
Okay, this certainly makes it kinda easy. There's a lot of things we don't have to worry about, like trash and...
Environment and...
I mean, it's really, there's, it's...
And ATM, that's a large ATM though, isn't it?
Do you wanna, is there a question, Harry? No? I wasn't sure if you had a question or not.
I think that that, the map that you may have is the area of improvement. So it's grayed out, that's the total area of pavement reconstruction, but ATM is actually, it's actually a much smaller, it's in the, it's in the...
That was the pavement.
Yep.
Let's talk about...
I have one question if I could. I have one question if I could, I don't want to get too far without asking the question, so on the image up there, it's very hard to see on the screen, but there's a lot of dimensions and I just, you're showing the 26 feet from the proposed island. Is there a dimension from the, the proposed handicap parking space to the parking spaces on the screen, right? So the ring that wraps around the right side of the.
Because it looks like it's tight there, like how are they going to get in and out?
I don't see the dimension shown. Because I think what, what we're seeing on a couple of these maps is the property line.
Yup, that's that, so we have the setback line, we're just doing a dash line, and the good line is the property line.
I, I don't know that the Planning Board needs to be terribly concerned with the parking.
Looks like there's enough space.
Over the property line at this point, but I do think that at some point, you know, that is a little bit vulnerable to going away. This, this intersection has been identified as a problem intersection that maybe 10 years from now we'll see a roundabout or something.
Oh, yeah.
In which the city would reclaim the parcel in those spaces and that, that would be with the point when do you have enough width for the two-way traffic on that, on that.
Is this news to you?
That's news to me.
Yeah, I thought it might be.
It was.
Well, unless there's an easement, which there's always been noted or anything like that.
It was interesting that the parking was located on the opposite side of the property line, so that's why we didn't, we tried not to touch any of that, obviously we don't want to go into the town right away. But it does appear if I.
I don't have a scale right now.
It seems to me there's a lot of space to reclaim there, but how could I possibly know what they intend to do and how much they need and I don't, it's, it's just a danger that they have to, I mean, I'm glad you notified them, but really, what can we do, there's nothing.
I'd say there's approximately 18 feet there, so it's not necessarily enough for two-way traffic, it would probably be one-way traffic. If we were to kind of take the information back to that goal line, we could lose two more spaces and shift it over and lose two more parking spaces on site. However, this was the location that the bank kind of proposed to lose the amount of parking spaces lost on site. So that was what is, what's existing there today, obviously, that, that area of space, so we just tried to match that again. But we can definitely kind of work with you and the town engineer to kind of.
I mean, if you look at that, the map that's up there now is the existing conditions and I guess it's not overlaid, so I wouldn't know, it looks like this, that last space, the triangle, the upside-down triangle space, it looks like you're mirroring that?
Yes, I think that's what our intention was.
But that is like, that's the potential pinch point.
It's right there, oh, that's tight.
If you were concerned with flow.
So is it the suggestion then that we would offer a suggestion to you to extend the meeting, come back and maybe push it in a few spaces because of the possibility of this future thing? I mean, I, I think it's really, it's not on us, we can make that suggestion because it offers you more security about what might happen in the future, I guess it's kind of a courtesy. But I wouldn't see us stopping a special permit for that person, reason if you wanted us to proceed. Am I right in how I'm kind of laying that out, or do you think that it requires something more, Jeff?
No, I mean, I think that unless there's an easement on the parking spaces that are on the city's property, unless there's an easement, which I'm not aware of, if the city would be able to take that, those spaces back if necessary, but it's really just more to the point of flow. If, if having that narrowed down to 18 feet for two-way traffic right there would prevent cars from going side by side, which I don't know if Chris has that coming, it looks like he's still looking at that, like whether 18 feet would be enough width there.
No, that'd be too, that'd be too tight for two cars to get by each other.
It's usually minimum 24.
Yeah, so, but, but couldn't you just, I mean, the way this is laid out, the ATM is so far back, you, if the, if that, if that easement went, that easement happened, you would, you could still revise the parking lot plan and put the parking spots for the ATM on the other side at some future, right, and just lose all the parking spots in front of the ATM? I don't think the ATM necessarily needs to move, you just have to re-allocate parking spots for the ATM.
The one concern would be that the light pole that's within that striped area, within that triangle striped area.
Yup.
So we definitely want to address that earlier rather than later, I'd say.
Yeah. The light pole.
And the ADA accessible spot does have that concrete ramp associated with it, so that it is considered ADA accessible. So if those spots were to shift, then the ADA accessible path would have to change, then essentially the ATM would have to rotate anyway.
180 degrees, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, so. Have to take that into consideration.
It's tough.
It's, yeah, it's a challenge, I mean, how, what's the percentage likelihood that this rotary would, a rotary would happen now? It's the first time I'm hearing it too. I mean, is it something that's been just bantered about in passing, or is it?
You said it's been identified, was the term you used, what does that mean?
Oh, well, no, I, I guess I would take the word identified back and say flagged. I mean, I think R10 has some, some known intersection problems. What we're, what we're trying to look at on R10, just, I mean, is, is that there are a fair number of actually developable properties still. We applied for some funding to explore, like a build-out analysis on R10, we don't know if we have the funding yet, so it would explore the build-out and associated intersection impacts. I think it was, it was something that the city engineers identified that this intersection has been flagged. And it's not necessarily that a roundabout would eliminate those spaces, it's more to the point of flow, flow of travel, which I, you know, I apologize because I had not really seen this till now, that that's a pinch point and I don't know if that's a significant issue or not, even like under existing conditions.
You're talking about the corner piece there where those parking spaces are on this side of the.
Yeah.
When I looked at it first on the plan, I thought, okay, that looks a little tight, but it does look like, you know, a car can drive by there and it's really just an issue, I imagine if someone happens to be parking there and is backing up as someone's curving around the ATM. You know, I do kind of, it, it came across in my head as an issue, but when I kind of zoomed in without my glasses and looked close, it seemed like, as a layman, there was just enough room, but I.
Yeah, 18 feet is enough.
So 18 feet would be to the property line, obviously the parking space would have to be closer to 20, but still it'd be pretty. We were just matching existing conditions with our, with our proposed striping to meet what was existing there.
Plus, even if you have the curb right on the property line.
Yeah, if the town does come back with a curb there.
Yeah, they're not going to be driving right up to that curb, curb.
Right, but this is if they do the.
We got to go, we got to go with what's going on now, not in the future. I don't, I couldn't care what was going on two years from now or five years from now, we got to deal with what's going on now for reality, okay?
Right, but really, it's a courtesy to them because, I mean, it can really upset their plans.
Yeah, then deal with it then.
Well, I think they should probably see the.
Alright, let's, I, I don't think there's anything we can do, it's really up to you if you want to continue to bring it back to them and have us make a decision whether or not. Let's talk about something else for now, if that's okay, what about the impermeable surface? You're repaving, so it's pavement on top of pavement, there's really no change there.
That's reducing it because we're, this is going to be landscaping, yup, so it's going to be grass covered.
And can we talk a little bit about the makeup of that, it's grass covering what?
For now, it's just, we just have proposed grass, we're not proposing any.
Dirt underneath?
Yeah, exactly.
Pulling up the gravel that's in the asphalt beneath it?
And the landlord maintains that, or the person who owns the property maintains that, or do you guys maintain that?
I think the landlord maintains that, we're doing it as courtesy to help circulation and we have remaining negative feedback from landlord on proposing helping them in this situation.
Okay, and I just want to make sure I'm clear, because I'm assuming it's pavement right now, which means under the pavement, someone prepped it with materials that go under pavement. You're planning to dig all that out to dirt, replace it with dirt and put grass on it?
Yup.
That's fine. Other than that one issue you raised, I really don't have any other issues I can read through my special permit criteria at this point. Jeff, I'd like a little bit of an indicator, because this is a, it's a curveball to me. It's a little outside of my bailiwick on how to handle this. I don't see this as something that can block a special permit as what might happen in the future. I want your take on the importance of pursuing this issue of.
Yeah, that's a tough one.
What will it be in the future?
I mean, what, what, the flag for me is just that you're able to call out the 25-foot and the 25, 6, the 26-foot on the new island and that's kind of the standard for two-way traffic, so I, I mean, there's two, I have, I'm of two minds, which is that.
Schizophrenic.
Yeah, yeah, you're mirroring, you're mirroring the existing conditions with the curved parking space and so be it, you know, it's just, it's the same, that's one way to think about it. The other is that if there are like known kind of pinch points in this property.
Now's the time to fix them?
And increasing the number of people, albeit by some number of 18 per day, something like that, so.
So did you ever have alternate plans? Are, are there alternate plans that, that maybe weren't as favorable, that positioned the ATM at a different location? Like there's a little more room over there?
So we did not have alternate plans. We're definitely willing to work with the town, obviously we've got the best solution, but the bank did choose this location because it did have visibility from the street as well as working with parking spaces that were not high turnover and met the setback requirements by the town.
I mean, my recommendation, I think my recommendation would be to continue to make 21st, let the applicant explore this a little bit. You know, I don't have any comments from the city engineer at this point, so I don't know, I don't know what they would say about the property line. If, and then, you know, the remedy is that someone determines that that 18 feet is adequate, it's existing and that's a finding, that you can get some, you can get some support for that, or it does look like you would take two spaces and shift.
Or that, or at some future point, the app, the owner has to just restrike their, their parking lot so that there is no passageway along there, the only passageway is in the middle and then if you want to go to Florence Road, you go out through the front, a front along the strip mall, it's not like you have to have a passageway there.
That's true as well, yeah.
They had, what, I think 78 or something spots required total and 90?
77 required, and we're proposing 90, yup.
90, so I mean, if they lose a few over there, there's a little bit.
It's really not that big of a deal, yeah.
We go wrong. So how do you feel about delaying? Because I'm, I'm also of two minds, I think it's valuable to give you time to pursue this because I think telling your clients that, hey, this thing might be coming, it could really mess up the plans is probably valuable, it's also good to go back to them and give them a special permit that you, I'm sure were.
Yeah, exactly.
So it's.
It's tough for me too.
I think, I'm definitely leaning, I'd like to get the information if you think the city engineer can help give us some more information. I mean, that seems like a wise decision on our part, but I want, you know, are you?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're obviously willing to come back, if it is, obviously I would like to, I guess I can relay the information that we are on the, on the borderline, just like right on the finish line of getting the approval, we're just exploring the options of if this roundabout were to occur and the town were to take back their property, that this would be considered a pinch point. We can definitely bring that back and say that you guys had the courtesy to kind of let us know about that information so that we don't have to, in the future, worry about what's going to happen in this area. I mean, my only concern would be if we were, if the town were to take back that property and we were kind of like going to take Chris's suggestion and just cut off that access area on that side, then we could have just gotten this approval tonight, but we are, I think the bank would be willing to kind of explore a few more options. The loss of two spaces does seem like it may be the most ideal scenario of shifting the ATM over, providing nine more feet on that, that side there of accessibility and go from there.
If I make the property owner a lot happier, choose then they can have that flow around their parking lot.
Yeah, I think obviously parking for property owners is the, the golden kind of ticket, so reducing parking even more might become a concern of the, of the landlord. Obviously, they want to maintain as much parking as possible, especially with the potential loss of the area within the, the town right-of-way.
Yeah, but you're already giving them 77, plus you're making it 90, so even if they lose a couple.
I think now is the time, I think, you know, as, as we're talking about it, there's a, there is something that occurs there now where you're going to build an island and you're going to shift people around to the right and they're going to, if they're not going to turn immediately to the left, they're going to try to go along that airport and now there's a light.
Yup.
And, and there's a parking space, I think we have a pinch point now.
Or it might be a one-way and then you've got people thinking they can go the wrong way and through the parking lot.
I think it would be better if you went back.
Two spots?
Shifted it to the, in this case, the east, or the west.
The west, at least, yeah.
At least two spots.
Well, it's one. One full spot, one full row.
Yeah.
Oh, one full row, yeah.
Yes.
Go ahead.
How come, how come you have any 80 spots to begin with? This is an ATM, this ain't a regular bank, right?
Well, the existing shopping center is why there's that many spaces. We have to take that, their uses into consideration.
You're including the whole, the whole, that whole parking lot?
We do the calculations for the Dunkin' Donuts as well as the whole shopping center in our calculations.
So you're figuring all the parking for everything, it's our Flurry Power and the, the, what Donald was and all that.
They already had too many parking spots.
If it was 90 just for an ATM, that would be an empty ATM.
So that's your responsibility?
If we're adding a use to a, to a site, yes, it is our responsibility to calculate the proposed parking.
So there's a proposal to say, let's save time and ask you to push it back too, which will save problems in the future and make it happen, it's tough. Makes it a little easier yourself for you if the Planning Board said it needs to happen.
But they still have to come back.
They still have to come back with revised.
That's not making my decisions, we'll say it's.
The Planning Board is recommending this solution.
That's, yeah, perfect.
Right.
Alright, what's the next one, you say May 21st?
21st.
And did we put anything on, no, we went to June 4th, so this would be a 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock and it, and I, I have, I have no other applications, so it'd be, there's an A&R, a lot of minutes, and then this, and I think it would be a good meeting to kind of do that, so.
So would we, would we be required to resubmit prior to the next point anymore, I mean, or could we bring, I guess I can be in communication with you to let you know what the bank is kind of leaning towards?
Yeah, I'm going to encourage communication with the city engineer, I'd like to have his confirmation that he's seen this and understand if he has questions or concerns, that's, that's one of the things driving my.
Yeah.
And two weeks, you know.
It might not be on time if he needs to put together, is he resubmitting plans that are two over, is that what we're saying?
I mean, I'd like to see a plan that has the two over.
How much time will that take you?
So the technical resubmission date is usually 10 days prior to the next hearing date, right, so that would.
And maybe that we need to push it out another two weeks?
I mean, ideally, we're on the May 21st, obviously we want to present something so that we can get approval for the client to, to proceed, so if you let us know what date we need to kind of get you something by, we can.
If you think you can make the May 21st and we think the city engineer can get answers by then, I'm more than willing to do it, but it's a tight timeline for you.
Yeah, I mean, I would recommend that the, the first order of business for your end is probably to talk to the bank, the second order is to talk to the city engineer, and I can assist with that. I mean, I think if we add, if, because we're not anticipating significant changes at this point, it's either going to be shifting over by a space or some acknowledgement that, that width is, is suitable or, or fine through here, I think, some confirmation of that. So I, I mean, on behalf of the board, if, if we're in discussions internally with the city engineer, I can find with May 20th for revised plans, I mean, this is not going to be significant.
No, I agree.
Yeah, we're definitely looking to be on the May 21st, whatever means possible.
Did you say 20th or 24th?
Yeah, 20th.
Resubmission by the 20th, we can even resubmit, I think by that Friday is definitely the.
21st is our meeting, he's saying it's the 21st.
Okay.
Because it's going to be such a.
Gives you the weekend. Yeah, okay, alright.
I move to continue the public hearing for Bank of America seeking a special permit to construct a walk-up ATM kiosk, including site improvements. To May 21st.
21st, I'm sorry.
At 6:00 PM.
I second.
Alright, any discussion, all in favor? Aye. Any against or abstentions, it's unanimous? And I'm sure they meant with the recommendation that you go pursue this thing.
Yes.
Oh, recommendation.
We'll reach out to town engineer, we'll work with Jeff. Alright, everyone, thank you very much, we'll see you.
I make a motion we adjourn.
I just want to ask Jeff before, before I accept that motion, did you have any announcements or anything of interesting you want, you want to add?
At this point, maybe on May 21st we can do an update on a couple fun projects, planning related projects.
Alright, there is a motion to adjourn on the floor.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a great night, I'll go turn it.
You too.